Business Conservation Committee, the interviews, Laura Dorsey. Well. Okay, then we will go with Judith Dossat. Dossat, come on up, please. And just tell us a little bit about why you're requested and in this position.
I grew up in Tennessee, hiking the Appalachian Trail with my dad. And now I hike the Appalachian Trail in Vermont with my dog. And it's amazing what you can see from the trail. That you don't necessarily see from the road. And I, I love Vermont, but I, I am concerned about keeping Vermont Vermont. And that doesn't mean that I would stand in the way of something that was good for the town. But I would be proud to be part of a Watchstop Committee that made sure that things were done correctly.
Have you been to to the Conservation Commission meeting?
Yes, I have.
Are you going to be able to make all the meetings? Carrie or Susan, any questions?
No.
Don't get it.
No question.
Okay. Um. We order or should we?
Yeah, Lauren, are you online at all? Then iPhone seventy seven. So Stephen Lawrence approved last week by the trustees, correct?
Correct.
So there are two spots open, one spot as in probably filled by Lauren being approved by trustees, but not by the select board.
Okay.
And then Judith here could be the other spot approved by the select board tonight and trustees at next meeting.
All right, so we'd like to make the motion.
Motion to approve Judith Dossat, Dossat for the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
Subject to the
Trustee.
Yes.
The motion has been made, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm guessing you're in favor. Susan, Carrie, you in favor?
Susan said yes.
Okay, I didn't see that, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go see the trustees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case.
Do you all have the microphones close to you because it is a little hard to hear?
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, conditions and deletions on the post agenda.
Yeah, we just want to add the next select board meeting, a change of date and time, so we can put that under new business.
Okay.
Yep.
Distance comments. Come on up, let's see.
Take that over.
Yeah, thanks.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm Tom Weschler, a property owner in Woodstock and an Otto Queche River Trail volunteer. Let's not lose sight of what the Otto Queche River Trail is trying to do. Five hundred people per week use our trail. And our Universal Access Project will now enable all people to be able to enjoy the Otto Queche River and nature. O R T has just received our conditional permit from the V D R B. And we're now in the thirty day comment period. Our project calls for control of invasives that are there on the one point two three acre along with the replanting of native vegetation. O R T has greatly enhanced this partial that is our trailhead from a forgotten property to a vibrant companion piece to East End Park through a limited budget, a very active volunteer group and support from the E D C and the Select Board. I asked the question, why is the town still considering buying the one point two three acre parcel? This makes little sense. Maybe a few years ago, there was some logic when there was belief that they could put sizable parking on the lower level. This isn't the case. Now, the Whisper application calls for floodplain protection and to prevent development within the river corridor, which will restrict opportunities for all, including the town. Purchase of the property does not come with any ongoing money for maintenance or support. The town will also lose Woodstock Resort Corp. taxes. And I remind everyone of what occurred last year with Faulkner Park when property was donated with an eight hundred thousand dollar endowment. But the town voted to turn it down. Importantly, the Whisper loan funds are not at risk. The town can use the Whisper loan proceeds for town village a higher priority environmental and conservation projects. The Select Board just needs to vote to not purchase the one point two three acres. Then the entire two hundred and eighty thousand dollars will be free for you to use for better projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments?
Can I?
Come on up.
Yeah. Okay, that come, please. Another. Hi, I'm Tom Phillips.
Hi, Susan.
Hey, I'm on the board of the Connecticut River Conservancy. And the Otto Queche happens to be a tributary to the Connecticut River. Everything we can do to get water to the Connecticut River in its purest sense without being dolled up helps our community and neighboring communities. I couldn't agree more that there are very, very few public access, particularly locations for disabled people to talk, walk, and be around nature. This is one of those places. I strongly suggest the town to not consider buying the property and allow this community to flourish with the current project as it is seen. I think Tom is doing a hell of a job, too.
Thank you.
Any other citizen comments? Okay. Managers report.
Yep, just a few things based on the last citizen's comments. My office has been in touch with, you know, Woodstock, O R T, the resorts, working through this issue, talking to the state. And we're confident that pretty soon whatever solution that benefits everyone together. And those conversations are still ongoing, but I think they've been fruitful. And I want to thank all the parties involved for, you know, working together on the solution. With that, I want to just let the community know that July fourth fireworks will be happening as usual at the high school on July fourth. So there'll be a fly coming out, it'll be in the newspaper, but hopefully everyone will join us for another celebration and have some fun. Finally, on the South Woodstock project, the town has to pay about forty three, forty six thousand dollars more than originally estimated. That's based off of the way the contract was created between the construction company and the engineering company. The town signed a contract with the engineering company for one year. They signed a contract with the construction company for a year plus, I believe, a hundred days extra, just based on the way the bidding and timing worked out. So the project is still ongoing with completion date in the next few weeks. But the engineering firm contract expired on March thirtieth. So to get the state's guidance from April through the end of the project, it's worth forty six thousand more dollars to pay for the consulting firm to kind of oversee and make sure the project comes to completion. And we'll get the final approval from the state. So that's something we would consider as well.
Thank you.
Then for the financial report, it's in the booklet, I sent the, the board. Susan has, Susan has a question, which I believe I answered ahead of time. But if there are any other questions, I'm happy to take them. With about ten days left in the fiscal year, it looks like we should be in a good spot to end the year in a small surplus.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We have permits?
No permits.
Yeah.
And then we told the Town Hall Building Committee that come back in July. Yeah.
Okay, so new business. Permit fees. For the planning and zoning, Stephen, come on up.
Hi all. For the record, Stephen Bauer, Director of Planning and Zoning. Hopefully everyone has their, their sheet with the, with the permit fees. Essentially, we'll try and stay quick, but kind of wanting to establish a annual review of what our zoning permit fees where they should increase, decrease, and just kind of give a, give a brief review. I don't know that we've ever established that within the department, and so that's something that I think that we should do just to make sure that we are modern and up to date. So I'll start with, does anyone have any specific questions about the fees that were proposed to you all?
The fees that were proposed were, I think that they were approved by the trustees.
Correct. Yeah, they're approved last Tuesday by the, by the trustees. So I'll add quickly just that our, so we're coming to the close of, just like Eric just said, about ten days left. We had budgeted for F Y twenty three, a total of fourteen thousand dollars for the town zoning permit fees. And we're, we're right now looking at about an estimated total revenue generation of just under twenty nine. That's good. Under this, so I took the liberty of putting together the fees for what is proposed of what could be generated. And if F Y twenty three copied exactly all of the things that we have for F, sorry, F Y twenty four was just a copy and paste of F Y twenty three, we would generate a hundred and eight thousand to one hundred and twenty five dollars. So.
Okay.
Yeah, any additional questions on that?
Susan, Carrie, any questions?
I have no questions, I think it's a great idea.
My only comment is that I hope we can somehow track, but any comments that come into the zoning office about the fees so that it helps with the annual review.
Great, I, I agree.
Okay.
That being said, I, well, I move that we accept the zoning fees for.
Mary made a motion to accept the permit fees for zoning and zoning, is there a second?
A second.
Follows in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Next, Stephen. The next one is a request for class four T H ninety seven to be terminated.
Is Leo Warner here? Yeah. So all we have to go off of is his letter that he sent. They're requesting class four, T H ninety seven, is what, three hundred and sixty nine point six feet to be terminated. It's driveway for the Mill Mall, which straddles Woodstock and Bridgewater. So I believe it's just some of the highway kind of goes to his driveway and he wants to take care of himself, so I think that's the.
There's no downside to that.
Yes, well, this, the, it's the entrance to the Mill Mall.
Right. I can speak to that.
Oh, fine, thank you.
My name is Leo Wer. I am the Principal of W B Mill, as well as of the Mill Mall, I'm the Owners' Association. Town Highway fifty seven, Woodstock, it's about point oh seven miles, about three hundred and seventy feet. It's our driveway into the mall, into the Mill Mall. And actually, there was an event this weekend that somebody ran into the side because it's in the middle of the driveway, you know, and so we're going to have to start redoing it. They actually, I don't know how they did it, but it's all askew now, so it'll have to be repaired. I was one, since it's a class four road and the town doesn't do anything to maintain it. And so part of it is asphalt, which has fallen apart, and part of it is like dirt, which has fallen apart. So our goal is basically, since it is our driveway, to sort of fix the side and actually maybe even move it so it's not in the middle of the road, so people don't run into it. And also start ripping up the asphalt and replacing it with gravel, basically, it'll be easier to maintain. One of the things we've run into is people say, oh, you can't do, I can go as fast as I want on this road because it's a class four. Problem, of course, is that when you put dirt down in there, suddenly spinning, and it's like, okay, another twenty, two hundred dollars for the dirt just went up and smoke, basically. So, and since the town doesn't maintain it, my request would be for the town to give up the town, that three hundred and seventy feet. And we will basically configure it, you know, so it's still access, don't get me wrong. Albert, when you basically say you can't go more than fifteen miles an hour down this road, forget this forty mile an hour coming, you know, keeping the dust down and everything else at the same time. The other thing is on a longer term, for where Ramontos is, I actually did hard pan there. We want to turn that into more pedestrian, in other words, block it off. You'll still get to the post office, don't get me wrong, still everything, but at least it'll slow people down. Plus, Ramontos will be able to put out tables and have it near the river and, you know, basically enhance their businesses as well.
Well, has, have you spoken to the Ramontos people?
Oh, of course, they, they absolutely, they, they're my tenants, okay? So they really would love to have that happen. Again, you know.
But that's the, the Bridgewater side.
That's the Bridgewater side, but the thing is, I've already met with the Bridgewater Select Board, and I said, can you discontinue your part of Town Highway fifty nine? Because, you know, they're never going to maintain it. And they were, they said, fine, I mean, you know, whatever process they're going to use now. But we want to basically slow people down so we can improve the road, you know, and basically make it much more user-friendly. That's what we're looking to do.
And that's all the the driveway piling and everything is your, your responsibility.
We have to, we've always had that responsibility. Don't get me wrong, I'd love the town to say, okay, we'll take it over and we'll maintain it for you, we'll fill it, we'll, that's not going to happen, you know, because it really is our driveway, when you get right down to it. And so, again, it's going to be our driveway, and we're sort of like fixing it up and, you know, I'll be, I'm actually being with the Conservation Commission tomorrow night and then Town Review Board, because we're trying to clean up the bank there because the riverbank is like, I mean, on the, don't get me wrong, on the Bridgewater side, Charlie Shackleton asked anybody, he just noted all down, it looks very interesting. But on the Woodstock side, I didn't want to do that because I wanted everybody involved in it. And it's like a junk pile down there, when you walk down, it's like, oh my goodness, look, there's cans and bags. I found used condoms there today, and it was like, give me a break, this is just a, this is just a junk pile. At this stage of the game, it needs to be cleaned up.
This is the, the, the highway supervisor here for the town. And Mark, what do you propose?
I don't think that very often.
Okay.
They, they, they all.
Right.
I mean.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't know what the process is, my understanding, you're warranted, and if anybody has objections to like throwing up the road, fine. Since we're the only one there, we don't all land around it, and the only neighbor is the Otto Queche. I don't think anyone's going to have any objection to it. So that would be my request, so we can sort of like get it all cleaned up.
I'll entertain a motion to let
Discontinue the road.
Discontinue
Down Highway fifty.
Down Highway fifty seven. And turn that over to, what's the name of the company?
It's the, it's the Old Mill Marketplace Owners Association. Yeah.
All right. Oh, you, you for me.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion down, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, guys.
We, the chair, if I could for one second. I think we're, we have four board members, oh, you're set, thank you.
I'm done.
Yes, we have four board members currently present, I believe two have to leave at seven o'clock. So it'd be my recommendation to kind of pick out the new business ones that have a time sensitive.
Okay.
And then move to the sewer questions, and then if we have time, go back to the ones that are left. And if we need to have a special meeting to finish up next week or something.
Okay.
Yeah, so I would suggest we tackle number four, seven, and eight, and nine, which will be the July meeting first. And then go into Pursuit Commission.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so.
It's eliminating.
The loan.
Yeah.
Yep. So the board, for number four, there are file loan, you have the documents in front of you. What this basically is, is a revolving fund for the main wastewater treatment plant that we're working on. It's a hundred and five thousand dollars that you can get yearly. And you're allowed to reimburse up to fifty two thousand dollars worth of costs. So if this is approved by the board tonight, we'll file a paperwork tomorrow and get fifty two thousand dollars worth of engineering costs that have gone to the main plant reimbursed before June thirtieth.
Any questions? Oh.
I think Susan question.
I'm sorry, I just had a question on, on, I think it's page fifty six of our packet.
So Susan, number four, so.
Sorry. Okay.
I know who your question is going to be, so we'll get there.
Okay, never mind.
Okay, if there's no questions, is there a motion to approve the loan?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Loan has been approved.
Okay. All right.
To an hour at seven.
Mark.
Okay, yeah.
So as the board remembers, a few weeks ago, the board allocated three hundred thousand dollars of the Opera Funds, the Carlton Hill Road Project. With that information, Mark Hunter, Director, solicited bids for that work. And he's here in front of the board with his recommendations for what bid to accept. And I believe you have the documents in the, in the, in your handout as well, but I'll turn it over to Mark.
I did get three of them, two of them are a little high. I've been speaking with Northwood Excavation. That's the lowest bid. He is eager to move forward with the work. He's done work for several years in the town. I met with him a few times, I met with him recently. We have a separate issue on Old River Road. I won a grant with V Trans, and I, I turned that over to him. I think he's more than qualified to do the, the job on Carlin Hill. He's doing a similar job for another town. And I think it would be wise of the town to go forward with Northwoods Excavation.
Susan, Carrie, any questions?
No questions.
Okay.
Then I would entertain a motion to approve Northwoods Escavating, it's a contract for
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Hey.
Next is our I T R F P. In early May, I advertised for a request for proposals for information technology for the municipality of Woodstock. Deadline was May twenty sixth. We received several proposals from vendors across the country, and those proposals were reviewed by myself and Fire Chief David Green. After reviewing all the proposals, we decided that the proposal from the town of Hanover, New Hampshire, was the best option for Woodstock due to the price, the location, expertise, and the long-term potential of Sharon Services. Tonight, I'm recommending to the board, they accept our nomination, our recommendation, and allow us to go forward into, into a contract with the town of Hanover, New Hampshire. With that said, you see on that sheet, it costs will be two thousand dollars a month with a six thousand dollar startup fee, which is basically them coming out doing a full audit of all services, attaching remote capabilities, so they can work remotely on our computers if needed. And kind of then coming up with critical needs or long-term needs that the town and village may have going forward. With all that said, in full transparency, the town manager of Hanover is a colleague of mine, we do talk frequently about issues we face and use each other for support. And because of that, I had David Green review the poses with me, so it will be with no bias on my part or his part. And so with that said, we do still believe that Hanover is the best option. But I do want to say publicly for the record that I do have a friendly relationship with the town manager in Hanover.
Thank you. Any questions? No questions? I would like somebody to make the motion to approve town of the Hanover to do our I T work.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
So number nine. A typical July meeting will be the third Tuesday of July, I'm going to be out on vacation that week, so I asked the chair if we could move it to the previous week. So July eleventh at ten A M, that works for the board, instead of July eighteenth at six P M. So I asked if that change could be made, so I could attend the meeting in person.
July eleventh?
Yes.
At ten A M?
Ten A M, yeah. Or if it's another time that works better for the members of the board, I'm happy to accommodate that time as well.
Okay. We, we don't have to make a motion, actually.
I think if you just accept it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Next.
Thank you.
Susan, Carrie, that's fine, won't you?
Fine with me.
Susan?
I don't have my calendar, but I think it's fine.
Okay. All right, so here it is.
So it's six thirty, we're making good time.
Let's do the sewer permits.
Yeah, if you want to go in the board of sewer commissions and do the permits. Yeah, if you want to go in the board of sewer commissions and do the permits and then abatement and go from there.
Yeah, and yeah, um. Okay, so we're gonna skip to the sewer. Right now, there's a abatement request for four Swain Street. Hey, Jamie.
The abatement, they're requesting a hundred and. A hundred and three dollars, thirty-two cents. Um, the payment was delayed. Uh, they're saying due to delayed receipt of the bill because of change of address. Um, I don't have information on when they're, they changed their address or whether uh we're aware of it ahead of time or not. Um, my assumption is that we were not aware of it because we do meet the changes as we, as we are told. Um.
Susan, Carrie, any comments?
I think that the landowner bears the responsibility of letting the town know their address has changed. I don't think that's the town's responsibility.
I agree.
I agree with Susan, yep.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion. Um. For the abatement, a hundred and three dollars and thirty-two cents.
Um.
To approve or disapprove?
A disapprove.
Okay, all those in. Motion made. Okay, motion's been seconded. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Okay. And then we have permits. One for. Two seventy forty-eight East Woodstock Road and seven oh eight. Woodstock Road. Um. Have they. Paid their. These fees that are associated with this?
I don't have the answer, but we can uh approve it with the assumption that paid, the fees have been paid.
Yeah, there's the. Yes. Oh, that's the.
Oh, there they are.
Yes.
I will um entertain a motion on any questions about the sewer permits for. Two seven forty-eight East Woodstock Road and seven oh eight East Woodstock Road.
I just have a quick question. Do we have a process where someone goes out, someone from the town checks this, checks these connections before they're closed up?
So using. Mark, Mark, yeah.
So either myself or Tim would be there on site to approve them before they make the connection. So that's.
Yeah, okay.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you. And so this is approval with making sure all the fees are paid.
Yes, because the fees are paid.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Second.
All of them favor?
Hi.
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 It's been made and approved. I would um suggest we go to number six.
Yep.
Okay.
Is there anyone? So numbers, Clowland, potential closer of Clowland Farm Road. So somebody that would like to pop and speak about that?
So.
You said, you said your name for the.
This Kathy Emmons, Cloudland Farm, Cloudland Road. Um, there's a group in our neighborhood of maybe thirty or more people that have been emailing and discussing the foliage traffic issue on Cloudland, which is becoming a nightmare. Um, the traffic has grown exponentially over the last three years, mostly because of social media and Instagram and TikTokers. And many, many, many of them are just coming to get a picture of themselves with Sleepy Hollow in the background. And then they just leave and go back. And literally, that's all that's happening. They don't even venture as far up as us usually. I would say that eighty-five percent of the people are going right there at Sleepy Hollow. So it's becoming a, you know, a hazard as far as safety concern, as far as if an emergency vehicle had to come through there. Honestly, they couldn't. Um, I believe we furnished you with some photos earlier today, and I hope everybody on the select board.
Uh, I didn't see any of those.
I, I did. I copied, I sent them to everybody.
Oh, I didn't.
Um, and then um just showing, just so you can see what the situation looks like. Um, and our Pomfret Select Board, we have met with them twice now. And we've all been brainstorming, trying to figure out how we can fix this problem. Um, we have so far gotten the geo tag removed from Google, Google Maps. Um, so there's no longer a pin showing Sleepy Hollow Farm. Um, our select board has written a letter um for us to distribute to all the Woodstock tourist organizations. Um, and anybody, anywhere, triple A, anybody that's promoting this as a tourist destination. Um, our select board is kindly requesting that, yeah.
I have that.
Good.
Yeah.
Um, that it does not be promoted. Um, it is a private home. But that's the main thing. It, it's a private home with no facilities. There are no parking lots. There's no parking spaces. It's on a very narrow dirt road. And um it's a big invasion of privacy for both those homeowners. And also many people on Cloudland Road, the whole Doten family, some of the Doten family doesn't even wanna stay in their homes for foliage because it's such an intrusion. Um, and then the problem goes down to Barbara Hill as well. John Morley and Glenn had people way up their driveway on their patio. But we all have countless stories of picnicking and our great hay field, um, trash, going to the bathroom, vomiting in people's driveways. Um, it's just becoming a real nightmare. I mean, the photos tell the story the best, which were sent earlier. Um, we also have a letter from the fire chief in Pomfret. Um, talking about the safety issues and also that even the one-way. Um. Though it at least created some semblance of a flow of traffic. Um, it, it caused delays for emergency vehicles, which would then only would have to go from Pomfret around to come up Cloudland if there was an emergency. And we do have several older residents on Cloudland Road. Um.
Oh, just. You've spoken to the um residents from Woodstock that live on.
So here are some emails, which Ray, you had got some of these today. The last one in hand, that's handwritten, is from Tom and Janet Born at the end of Cloudland. And um. They are, everyone that we spoke to, I don't know, here's another one, Lauren Bill down there. Um, everyone's in favor, except Kim and Scott Smith did not want to write a letter. They have some other concerns about, I believe, tourism in general and not wanting to cause any issues there. We feel that this is not a Woodstock tourism problem, but it's a sleepy hollow farm um nightmare. And we are trying our best just to be able to, if we can close the road for one year, for one foliage season, or maybe two, and hopefully get this whole place off the map and off the TikTokers sites. That maybe things will quiet down for the longer term. Um.
What dates are you looking at?
Well, I mean, it's really up to our select board. I see Brett, Ben Brickner is a conference select board member, and he's on the Zoom. Um, we haven't set any dates and they haven't, you know, agreed to any particular closures yet. Except that if they close it at the Pomfret Woodstock line, there's no way all those cars can turn around there. Um, so closing it at the end by the cemetery allows them either to continue, you know, down to the beautiful Taffsville Bridge and get back on four and go back to Woodstock, or, you know, maybe they could loop around there and head back to Woodstock. We also hear is an email from the um Guillermo and Raphael, who are the current owners of Sleepy Hollow Farm. And they are completely in favor. The letter tells you that it's a huge annoyance to them, the whole neighborhood. Um, they are worried about so many people and just safety of their own property. Um, and also in that letter, they're asking, you know, Woodstock officials, please to stop promoting this as a tourist destination. It is their private home. So that's it.
Any questions?
No, I did notice, who, is it um? An employee of the EDC that runs the Woodstock Vermont Instagram feed? Who runs that?
I was told by John Spector that it is shared between the Woodstock Chamber and the EDC.
They just promoted Sleepy Hollow.
They promoted Sleepy Hollow, and they also tagged another private home in Pomfret in their post. And I specifically emailed with John quite a bit on um Saturday, saying, look, public promotion of private homes seems like not a good thing to do. I mean, obviously with Sleepy Hollow, it's created a very serious issue. And, you know. We'll leave it there.
Absolutely. I would be in favor of seeing what the Pomfret Board selects and then figuring out how we can best support them. That would be my preliminary suggestion.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Well, I mean, doesn't have to.
Does it need to be a motion right now? I don't think it needs to be.
No, Carrie, yeah, Carrie's correct. We can just, we have a discussion now. Um, and it's decision to be put off until Pomfret makes a decision, until we get closer to.
Well, I will just say that I know Pomfret is waiting to hear if you will allow closure at the cemetery.
The cemetery.
At the end of Cloudland Road versus partway up Cloudland Road at the line, at the Pomfret Woodstock Town Line.
Oh, I, I think if Pomfret closes on their end, it only makes sense to close it our end too. And just try it, you know, try it for a year and see what happens. Um, I would be in favor of that. I would like to, I think we need to do it bilateral. Doesn't need to be a unilateral um decision, because it only really makes sense to do it together.
And all the, all the neighbors, all the people that live on Cloudland Road seem to be in favor of it, the Woodstock.
Except, except possibly the Smiths.
Wendy Marin has a hand.
Sorry.
Wendy?
Oh, Wendy has. Wendy, you're on mute.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Ray. Um, I applaud the, the community neighbors coming together to raise this concern. And I just wanted to um support Carrie's question about whose, what marketing is happening on Woodstock's end. I think this exposes a, a problem we've already experienced with the internet and GPS. But it, it, it really highlights the dangerous nature of uh very, marketing like this. And I just wanted to add that comment, if the select board could follow up with the EDC and our marketing program in Woodstock to be more sensitive with this, these issues in mind. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, did you have a comment?
Yes, I'm just wondering how you envision it being enforced.
Well, I mean, that will be partly up to, is Smith's right here, our select board, hi. And um. I mean, last year, the town of Pomfret paid thousands of dollars to have a sheriff present just for the one-way to be sure that cars weren't going the wrong way. So I'm sure that's on the table. I know that the neighbors are willing to do what we have to, to try to have some enforcement um in a present, but definitely road closed signs and probably some no parking signs and who knows?
So that's parking. I see. The cemetery.
Mm-hmm.
And then they all go to Barbara Hill.
Well, I mean, we have also discussed with our select board the possibility of closing Barbara Hill as well.
Alright, then what? Okay, so then where do they go?
Well, for what? Wha- what's the question?
They're going to where as they, the outlet.
They won't, they won't be allowed out.
The road.
They won't go up the road.
Oh, they won't be allowed.
It'll be residence only. Cloudland Road residents only.
Oh, and they would not be the Barbara Hill.
Right.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that's the, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, and I think before Susan makes a good point, though, on the Woodstock end, you know, Mark can obviously put up no signs, you know, residents only, whatever. But um there may be a cost associated with enforcement or calls to the police, police going back and up, up and back. Um.
Well, they would, if, if they closed it there, I'm assuming that if Pomfret has a detail, we'll put it down on.
At the end.
The very end.
Okay.
Wow.
It doesn't make sense to do it halfway up.
Yeah, and let.
This is Meg Emmons here from the Pomfret Select Board. We, we have talked to the sheriff about um sort of adding to our normal patrol that's contracted with them. So there is talk about patrolling the end wherever it's closed, or if it was to be one-way, depending on what's decided in the end. Um, and that will be patrolled on the weekends. I'm not sure the hours again, I think it would be for six, eight hours potentially on Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah. I know that Martha, did you?
We have.
Did you want to have a comment?
Thank you.
Oh. And I'm sorry, if you, if you do.
Don't come on up. There's a microphone here also.
But um, so I own several businesses in town, and I appreciate all the marketing efforts on the EDC part. But there was marketing of Sleepy Hollow and another Cloudland Farm. I don't know if you visited this yet.
What?
The EDC.
Yes.
And the marketing monies. So my. So I have it on my phone.
Yeah.
And I think that we should just stop marketing people's private residence. And this is my issue with it.
That's fine for example. That one, the. Yeah.
Okay. So, take a try.
I don't want to rush you, but.
Okay, so, you know, so I, you know, I was called upon, not prepared.
No, but the.
Right, so this was on the social media.
True.
Woodstock social media, just the other day.
Was it really?
Yes. So.
Yeah, I, I think we, I think that uh we.
Maybe that stops now. As a resident of Cloudland.
We're.
Right?
Absolutely. And I think that the EDC has already been made aware that that was really inappropriate. And I think that that, I think that that social media work was done and, and from my understanding, it was the EDC and the um. Oh.
That's all I'm saying. You said.
In the chamber and the chamber. So they need, they know that it's inappropriate.
Yeah, I, I, I believe they were, they're aware of it and are gonna change their.
And there were two on Cloudland. This was the other one. I know, but okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure that, like, this is a kind of a contradiction. Like, we're having a problem on Cloudland, but advertising and promoting people's private residence is probably.
One hundred stop.
Yeah.
One, one hundred percent. You're exactly right.
Yes, no, I, you get no disagreement, I think, with the board.
Okay.
Um. So we'll wait to hear from the Pomfret.
Yeah.
Uh.
I think we, we can have this on the agenda for the next few meetings and we, we go back and we get rid of conversations in Pomfret. I'd also like to bring in our police chief as well, um, and, and Mark Hunter in a conversation, just so we're all on the same page before we go forward there again.
Alright. Any other comments? Just quickly, I mean. Cool. Scott, Scott Smith. Um. The uh. I'm, I understand the thing, I'm sort of a favor of closing it, but I'm worried about the ba- the bottom of the road there, of what happens with people. Just starting to park. There's lots of people parked there already at the bottom of Cloudland.
Just starting to park, there's lots of people parked there already at the bottom of Cloudland and what happens, like, it's, it's, I don't know, that being unknown, I guess.
Well, that would be something that has to be worked out.
Yes, that that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very stable, but. Right at the top, crossing the schoolhouse, it's part of Sleepy Hollow. I had last year, six people were parked in my driveway the whole time. I'm worried about legal. And if any pictures that you saw there, it's worse than that. It it really is, it it's, it's so bad. I just, I was just going, even if the road wasn't one-way, I was going, I live right at the top, it's only a couple hundred yards to to uh Barber Hill. And I was just going down Barber Hill the last couple of years, because it's just so bad trying to go down that road. Somebody's gonna get hurt, a tourist, heart attack or something, and nobody's gonna be able to get to him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay, you need, you need to come up front. Okay.
You live on Cloudland Road?
Just state your name first, even though I know who you are.
I live at Pierce.
Okay.
I live on Cloudland Road. And the pass, I parked from Sleepy Hollow, passed my house all the way down to my farmhouse. And they parked me in. If I get hurt and I can't get out of my driveway, then what? They park on my front lawn, they turn around, they leave themselves in my yard. I'm very unhappy and something has to be done. I don't want to deal with it every year. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll be next.
Annie Mears Abbott of South Pomfret, formerly of Woodstock. And um, I I just want to say that everybody in Woodstock around can tell horror stories all day long about annoying, annoying tourists, whether it's in town, out of town, elsewhere. And I think what I'd really like to emphasize is that this isn't that. Like, this isn't a general tourism problem, this is very specific to this one location, which is very kind of organically marketed itself outward. And I think. Um, I I'm a Barber Hill resident also, obviously, I'm I'm in favor of closing that portion as well. But my, my concern is always that if we don't find a way to do something to tame, like, just the outpouring of the publicity that's just marketing itself. Yes, the E D C can stop, can stop using their, you know, their Instagram account to do that. But that's like the actual impact of that on the overall ecosystem of Instagram and TikTok and what's out there is going to be extremely, extremely minimal. And if we don't kind of curb this now, it's, it's the potential for the continued, continued ex- exponential growth. Um, like, really cannot be understated.
Thank you, Annie.
You're welcome.
I'm Jim Robinson, I live on Cloudland Road in Pomfret. Um. My in-laws, Fred and Nancy Doughton, have a farm there called Elm Grove Farm. And in order to try to protect some of their own private property, they placed orange cones in the road. Well, a full-sized tour bus stopped, moved the cones, and parked in front of their barn. I counted ninety-seven cars parked along the road on a Sunday from the schoolhouse down to Mrs. Pierce's house. It's a serious issue. And I, I have photographic evidence of all of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think.
Ray, Ray, I would just like to say that I really truly understand that this is a grievous and specific issue that far transcends like our general issues around tourism. And I would like to just state here that I am really in support of whatever we can decide to do with the town of Pomfret. Um, I have to hop off the call soon, I'm away for family reasons, but I I I don't need to hop off. And I just don't want to um leave the meeting without just stating that I'm, that I really feel like I understand what the issue is and I'm very much in support.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Um, and I know Susan, unless you have a comment?
No, I agree that I think um it's, you know, people in Reading are having the same problem. And it's, it's, you know, just private property being abused and and that we should support Pomfret and what they're, whatever they need to do.
I agree.
Brickner has his hand raised.
Who?
Ben Brickner of the Pomfret Select Board has his hand raised.
Hi, I, yes, this is Ben Brickner, I'm a Pomfret resident, member of the Pomfret Select Board, just have a logistical question. Um, thank you all very much for taking the time to to hear all the concerns that have been raised. Um, when Pomfret does make a decision on how to handle the traffic flow this year, what is the best way for us to communicate and coordinate uh that decision with the town of Woodstock? Uh, should we be in touch with Eric?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, that was the best part is to follow through mail, we've been training emails already.
Okay, great, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um, and because we have two Select Board members that have to leave, two of us can't make any decisions. I will entertain a motion to adjourn for the evening and.
The most.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, hi.
All those, nobody?
So. There was no.